Yep. We're going to call the October 21 Selectmen's Meeting to order. Meetings of the Board are recorded for Burling Cable and YouTube. And your voice or image may be recorded. First, we have approval of minutes for October 15. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Seconded.
Okay, is there anything to be said? All right, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondence? Nothing. General public comment? All righty.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween. Thank you, Eloise. Then we'll have the Treasurer come up and we'll talk about the borrowing for the ladder truck.
We're in the process of paying off the third year. And as part of the way we funded it, we're borrowing for the last two. Then eventually, we'll finish the bands two more years from now. And I need some signatures. Oh, you have to...
Yeah.
Give a little summary.
Do we need... Would someone like to make a motion to approve the borrowing?
Borrowing.
Do I hear a second?
You hear a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So do we need to provide like a little summary for folks who watch this and have no idea what we just voted on?
This is to finish funding the ladder truck we purchased two or three years ago. We used a method that was called a band. And the law allowed us to expand the number of years that you could borrow that way. The interest rates are lower and there's less cost to do the borrowing. What is usually a $60,000 cost is a few hundred dollars plus interest. So it's going to be a State House note. And we'll have two more years to pay it off. It's coming out of excess levy capacity. It's not a debt exclusion.
Is there anything you want to add?
The interest rate?
On the new borrowing is, I believe it was 1.83% wanted. And that's what most towns are paying now for that kind of borrowing. It was 1.83%. And the amount borrowed is 231,378. Well, we're getting there. These first three forms are for the tax-exempt status of the borrowing. It's routine for municipal borrowing. Number two.
It's just in one place?
Yep. Next is number one.
Number three.
Okay. Oh, wait a minute. I signed everything.
Green sticky for... Sticky must file now. I'm sorry, yes, can I sign?
Okay.
This has been witnessed by a notary who will authorize it. I think that's it.
Okay.
Post haste.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the Highway Facilities Superintendent Monthly Report. Are you still writing it?
He's filling in the blanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hey there.
I sit here so you don't yell at me because you want people sitting over there.
Well, I just want you to close it.
Oh, do I? How is everyone?
Good.
I'm assuming everybody got the electronic version of our monthly report?
Mm-hmm.
So we completed our Allen Road Drainage Trench Job. Potholes, a lot of pothole complaints over the last couple of months. We started doing our winter maintenance on our plows and trucks. We had a tree company come in for two days. We were able to take 12 trees. I think we took eight off Crosby and two off of Colson.
How many does that leave us? 588?
I got money for one more day. So the trees that came down this past week in the storm weren't dead trees. They were live trees.
Oh, geez.
It is what it is.
How are you prioritizing? How do you even...
I roll with dice and...
Those are near wires?
No.
They're all near wires?
Stuff that it looks like it's in danger of coming down. Or stuff that really starts dropping branches. It's a guess. I mean, how do you tell? There's no exact science. The trees that came down this past week, they were live trees. They leaved out. That's why they came down, because the wind caught them. One of them was gigantic, the one that was on Walnut. It took us two hours, four of us, to clean it up. It was huge.
Wow.
A little building maintenance going on, nothing out of the ordinary. Signed complaints from PEG. We'll do those. I'm hoping everybody saw the nice article that Ken Cleveland wrote in the...
Yes, very nice.
Yes, it was very nice.
Did a nice job with that, so...
Aiden, got a copy of it?
Yeah, I bought it and I gave it to her.
Nice.
Other than that, business as usual.
So I have a question.
I have an answer.
Excellent. Your wicked visit, obviously. Can we possibly revisit getting someone to take down the signs so I'm not annoying you or I'm not stopping in the middle of the road and running across the street and ripping the sign down on your behalf?
What do you want to do?
That's total... I mean, we can go through the proper procedure. I just want to take stuff off you because you obviously have more... You have very important stuff to do. When something like this takes time for you to drive throughout the town and go, rip, rip, rip.
Well, I got the guys doing it now, so I keep...
Okay.
I mean, they get to the point now where they're taking them down without instruction.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we can try to keep doing what we're doing for a while. And if that doesn't seem like it's working to your liking, we'll do something else.
Well, I'm just cognizant of all the time that you need to spend on the more important stuff, especially as winter starts to creep nearer and nearer.
Well, like I say, I did notice the guys are now... You know, I see the signs in the rubbish, so I know that they're...
Taking them down.
Taking them down without anybody saying anything, so...
All right, let me know.
And the maintenance on the new building? Is that... Is it... Are there issues?
So my well pump died last week.
Oh, that's a little something.
In the new building?
Yeah.
Wow.
Under warranty?
No.
Of course not.
Actually, the pump didn't die. One of the valves failed and they couldn't get the pump out of the well because the well collapsed.
Wow.
So they ended up cutting the pipe and sending the pump south and putting a new pump in.
You got money in your public buildings to pay for that?
It wasn't a lot of money. It was 1,500 bucks or something.
But still.
Well, yeah, still.
Can't go without water, so...
No, you can't. Okay. Let us know if there's an issue.
Okay.
Can you tell us about the heat AC battle?
Here? This is ongoing. It's the time of year.
It just looks exciting.
So it...
Dramatic. It's dramatic.
It can't change by itself, so you have to either shut the AC off or shut the heat off, one or the other. So now, once we get into heat season, it'll be good until next spring when we get back to transition time.
So you have to manually...
June complaints.
Turn the mower on.
Too hot or too cold. Mostly too hot.
I'll pitch in and get a fan. Take it or leave it, but I've got to have a fan. Hey, before you go, Margaret, I know that you were talking to other towns about maybe cost sharing. Has anything come of that?
No, well, not with a... On the bucket truck itself, only with one other town. I've reached out to others. There's one other I was going to reach out to in this area beyond that. It doesn't make geographic sense. So I guess my question would be, is there something CMRPC can work on with us to do a two-town, shared bucket truck thing? It would give each town a little more time with the truck, wouldn't have to be divided three ways. And it could potentially be eligible for grant funding through Regionalization Efficiency Grant or MVP Grant or whatever. So I'm willing to continue the discussion with the Town Manager in Clinton. Dave, I know you've had some comments about the sharing, so we'd really have to work on an agreement that works for both towns.
I think we should try to keep moving forward with that. I'm going to put it in my capital plan for next year to see if we can fund one ourselves, but I don't probably see that happening.
How much do they run?
So we'll spend $300,000 to buy a new truck and a chipper.
Okay.
Okey-dokey.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Keep me posted.
You got it.
Okay. We have a 7:00 PM text classification hearing. Are they all set?
Do I need to read this?
Yeah. I just wonder, are they ready to go? Are you guys... Y'all set?
She was just here.
I think through the chair, I think it would be okay for the clerk to read the notice of the hearing and just allow everybody to get in here.
Okay. Go ahead.
So we're having a public hearing in the town of Burling. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56, the Board of Selectmen shall hold a public hearing on Monday, October 21, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Burling Municipal Building located at 23 Linden Street, Room 206, Burling, Mass. This hearing shall be held with the Board of Assessors for the purpose of discussing and determining the certified valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property: residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. Interested citizens may present oral or written views prior to or during the public hearing. Sign the Board of Selectmen, Christine Keef, Lisa Wysocki, Margaret Stone. This notice was posted on the My Town Government on October 9, also located on the town's Facebook page on October 9 and in the Telegram and Gazette newspaper on October 11. Thank you.
All right. Welcome.
You got it. Hey, you know...
Hi. We're back again.
Yes.
Do you all have a coffee or do you need one or...
We have made a few copies here of things, so...
Okay, so...
You're going to start with this?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're here to do the calculations for the tax rate and other tax rate numbers are estimated for this presentation because nothing's complete till the DOR says yes. So all these numbers are proposed. Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40, Section 56 allows a shift in the tax burden between property classes. This does not change the total tax levy as voted by Town Meeting. It simply determines the share borne by each class. So the role of the assessor is to value all the property for purpose of equity, equitable taxation based on fair market value by what sales have taken place for the prior calendar year. So this is FY 2020 we're reviewing and we use sales from 2018. We administer the abatements, exemptions, and excises, and we present the classification hearing to the Board of Assessors. Now, we do a lot more than that. So the purpose of the public tax classification hearing is, like it said in the thing, is for people to send in their reason... You know, if they have an opinion on which way it goes and to set the town's tax policies. So tonight, we'll discuss a uniform or a split tax rate, an open space discount, a residential exemption, and a small commercial exemption. And the four classes of property are residential and open space, and commercial, industrial, and personal. And here, the preliminary total values for each class in the total taxable. And then we get to this cute little spreadsheet, which shows a sampling of the billing. So like last year, you split the rate at 45%. So if you split the rate at 45% this year, the residential would be 1,601 and the commercial would be 2,733. And then it goes down from there depending on which shift you decide on. So if you wanted to keep the... I'm not quite sure. Did I explain it okay to you guys, what I said before? Okay. If you go to the 48%, like Margaret had suggested in her notice, then it keeps the percent change at the same level. So both classes are having the same levelness.
Yeah, percent changes.
Percent change.
Kevin, did you want to say something? Because you started to.
On page eight, right here is the two lines we're talking about. This is 45 and this is the 48, okay? And then the percent difference shows up here. She can explain that. But that keeps things relatively equal. Okay.
And then there's a... This is a spreadsheet bigger with all the options you could do. That comes right out of the Department of Revenue's recap process. And then the big thing this year... Well, I guess I should not rush through it. I'll let you digest that.
So Molly, where do we stand? Like last year, we were on the lower side of North Row, Hudson, Boyleson, Clinton. This year, going up, what, an additional 74 cents? Are we still in line?
We're the first ones to set our tax rate because we're biannual and they're all semi-annual, so they won't do it till December.
If I could through the chair, if we're just going to... And not that we can compare FY '20 to FY '19, but FY '20's proposed rate with the 48% shift would put Burling's residential tax rate five cents below the average of all these FY '19s.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Historically, I did this up. These are the tax rates for the bordering towns. So historically, Burling has always like had the lowest residential rate, except for Marlboro. But Marlboro's a city, so I don't really...
Count them.
Count them. So by far, I think we have kept the rate reasonable.
Wow.
Is that my time up? Bye.
Next assessor? Come on down.
All right. Well, that's interesting. They're doing pretty well.
It's... The rate has always been one of the lowest compared to the people.
Neighborhood towns. Which, considering we need similar services and we have a much smaller population and spread it across, it is...
Yeah. All right. Is there any questions for Molly?
I just have one more.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
One more piece of battery. This year will be the first year for the community preservation surcharge. Well, depends on which pocket you take it out of. So this spreadsheet shows that if you do it at the 48%, the average residential household, which is 430,200, the 3% would be 15671 of that. And the average commercial would be almost $2,000. And then I did... Because the malls are the biggest commercial thing, I did their average and they would be about 17,000, 18,000. So that's also going to be on the bill, just as a...
Molly, do you know if this lines up with the information that was presented to... With the CPA? I mean, I just want to make sure that the numbers that were provided, where everyone sat there figuring out the calculations that...
I know the numbers... Buzz had talked to you about the numbers. I'm pretty sure he got them from you.
Right, but that was based on...
Based on...
Whatever tax rate... Pre-tax is... I mean, pre-tax rates that we had. So what was that fiscal... That was Town Meeting...
Two years ago?
Two years ago. So that would have been based on FY '18 or '17's tax base. So it's probably... Well, we'd be a little bit more now because the taxes have gone up.
The $100,000 exemption would still apply. The other exemptions that could be applied for would still apply?
Yes.
Okay. I just want you to be prepared so when the phone calls start to come, when someone says, "I calculated it two years ago and I was going to pay, making this up totally, $80," and now all of a sudden, it's doubled. What happened?
It's always going to be based on...
We're closed.
It's... Yeah, I would probably get those either way. But it's always going to... It's always going to change year to year depending on what the taxes are. So people...
It's a percentage.
Agreed, but people forget. Where it's been a couple of years, people forget. So you want to get that out in front of them.
This is a good place to do that. And then the small commercial exemption, the Department... The Division of Unemployment and Assistance Board sends us a list of qualified people that have reported to them. If it's a multi-business property, all the businesses must qualify to receive the exemption. The value has to be less than $1 million. Industrial properties do not qualify, but we don't have very many industrial properties. And the exemption goes to the property owner, not the business, so it relies on the trickle-down effect. So the list that we got this year, I think it had 77 lines on it. I don't know what businesses, I guess, on it. And out of the 77, 34 were on our list of people who could get the exemption. So there's 34 people at the 10%, which you've done that since, I think, 2011, 2000...
'13.
'13, thank you. And then the excess levy is at 699,459. And this year, I also did up a little sheet so we remember to do all the right...
Take all the right votes. All right. Okay. Questions? Comments? Nobody out there either. Okay.
Everybody's happy?
Molly, happy with the taxes, Molly?
I'm the assessor.
We love our assessors.
I see your motions. I didn't send that on the digital copy.
Are you all good if I start?
Sure.
I move that the board wrote a residential factor of 48%.
And then the reverse of that is... Eight point... It's .8445 is what the residential factor, I guess, is the code.
So this shifts more of the allocation to commercial than residential?
Yep. All right, so you've... Have you made the motion?
Yes, she did.
Okay. Would you like to second it or... I can do that.
Okay.
I will second the motion. Is there any comments or questions?
I think we're shifting a considerable amount off of residential, which is always a positive thing. It balances out. As Margaret said, it balances out the percentage...
Percentage increase?
Percentage increase to both evenly.
And it also recognizes the new CPA surcharge, too. So it attempts to keep the residence... The residential tax rate lower so the residents can absorb the CPA surcharge as well.
Do you have anything else to add?
No. Thank you for asking, no.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The residential exemption.
I move the board vote to not adopt a residential exemption.
Second. Anything else? All in favor? Aye.
I move the board vote a 10% small commercial exemption.
Okay, and I'll second that. Anything else?
Molly, you said how many qualify for that exemption?
34.
Out of, I think, the total mixed-use property and commercial property is like 64.
Oh, it's on there?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, you have a different one than I do. Okay.
This is what Molly...
Yeah.
I asked her because she had the motions on nicely.
Okay. So we've got a motion on the table and a second. Anything else? All right, all in favor? Aye.
I move the board vote to adopt and...
Not.
Not adopt, sorry. Wrong one. Not adopt an open space discount. Thank you, Molly.
I will second that one. Is there any questions or comments? Okay. All in favor? Aye.
So I pre-did these. So I pre-did these. So you could sign, if you want to read the whole thing over, and then just sign in the big open space.
Have you looked at this, Margaret?
Um, I have not.
Love to take a look at that.
Yep. I'll show you.
And you did this on the 48?
Yep.
There it is, okay. Another year down.
No, we buy so fast!
I know.
So are we supposed to sign this?
Yes, in the big white open space. See, it says signatures. Unless you want to sign in that little space, you can, or sign in the big white space.
Thank you, I know it's not easy to do taxes. So I appreciate your work. Here's two.
Thank you.
You weren't sitting back there when I looked at them.
That's okay.
Okay.
The people behind us are awfully quiet. They're always that quiet.
Thank you, Ms. Molly.
Thank you! Guess we're done.
Thanks for coming in, you know, you should come in more often, I guess.
Through the chair.
No, no, we have to do this.
Molly's going to be updating this chart on the CPA informational sheet. Based on what the board decided.
What we just voted, okay, great. Alright, we have another, we have a hearing at 8 o'clock. So seeing as how it's not, it's 7:25 or so. Department updates, I think we have already done that. Town administrator report.
I've provided just an abbreviated report this week. There's been a lot going on, so everything that's still in effect from my last report, you can refer to on the website and take a look at that. But one of the things that I wanted to highlight is the fact that we have prepared a Community Preservation Act implementation informational sheet for tax bill inserts. So that is, that's been provided to the board. It's in, it's in Google Drive. One of the things we changed on that sheet was we didn't want to imply that the match for 3% surcharge communities would always be 100% state match, because that has fluctuated over the past and it could fluctuate in the future. So we're not saying dollar for dollar. We are saying that Berlin's contribution would be matched by the Commonwealth according to their distribution formulas and the availability of program revenues. So, and Molly is going to, like I just said, Molly's going to update the financial portion of the sheet to reflect what the board just decided. Fire chief search. Brian Duggan at MRI and I have, and I have been communicating. The list of candidates after MRI's resume screening has dropped from 11 to 5, based on the resume screening itself. And he and I are going to be talking next week when he returns from Grand Cayman. He has no communication at the moment. So we're going to talk next week and we're going to schedule telephone interviews as the next step.
So Margaret, when do you think they'll be to us-ish?
I'm going to, I want to try to expedite it. My, my concern with the fire chief screening and search process is that I really would have liked to have had an assessment center. I, I think that an assessment center is really important when it comes to public safety chiefs. So I'm going to talk with Brian about how to best fit that in, to try to expedite that as well. On Fri, any other questions on that? No? Okay. On Friday, I met, Chris and I both met with Representative Naughton and WRTA, or Worcester Regional Transit Authority's Executive Director, Dennis Lipka, about possible options regarding the COA van procurement. Basically, the town has two options. The town could, well, has probably more than two options, has got an assortment of options. It could buy the van through WRTA. WRTA could buy the van and say, "Here you go, here's your van." Now, town of Berlin, you pay for maintenance, you pay for insurance, you screen drivers, you pay for the drivers, you, you know, you cover everything. It's your van to do what you want with it. But other options exist through WRTA agreements where there could be shared use between, for example, Berlin and Northborough. Northborough is already running more than one COA van. They're running multiple COA vans under an agreement with WRTA. And those vans are being the maintenance, the insurance, the gasoline, and other things that dispatch and other things are being paid for through the agreement with WRTA. So it was, I think we were encouraged to have Holly reach out to the Northborough COA director to talk to her, and then have our COA visit the Northborough COA to see how it's working for them. We talked about conducting surveys, about where Berlin residents want to go, how frequently they'll go, what days and times they'd want to go. So we're looking for use patterns for the van. So before we actually dive into committing to something, we want to be able to explore all options, to be able to provide the greatest or optimize the use of a council on aging van in Berlin. So that's something that we're working on. And I'm meeting with Holly on Wednesday morning to talk about, to recap our meeting and to see if we can start connecting with Northborough on this.
Are we still, Margaret, are we still concerned about having to stay within Worcester County? Or can we go into Middlesex County? So it's not an issue anymore?
It was made very clear that trips frequently go outside of the county, frequently go outside of the county. Trips from, I want to say, Clinton-Lancaster area are heading north toward Lemonster. I think sometimes they travel to Franklin, as far as Franklin County. We made it very clear in our meeting that a bulk of our trips, a majority of our trips are traveling into Middlesex County. You know, there are a few that stay local. No limitations on those.
No issues.
No limitations. And then just two other things, so we can move on to other things. Just a reminder that the board will be having Coffee Talk 4.0 on Wed, this Wednesday evening at 7 o'clock. I noted there will be special guests, both of our public safety chiefs and Dave, our highway facility superintendent, will be there. So folks are invited to attend and ask questions. And then finally, we do have a special event application for, with a request for the board's approval tonight for a Halloween festival for children, Sunday, October 27th. And Woodward Ave would be closed from 1 to 4 p.m. on Sunday for that Halloween fest. That's what I have.
Questions or comments for Margaret?
Thank you for all the work that you did, Margaret, because I know that it might have seemed like a dump and run of like, "Hey, we want to do this," and then I stuck you with everything. So thank you for all your work in coordinating everybody.
Thank you, we managed.
And the kids of the town will appreciate you as well.
Kids will appreciate it.
Alright, well, we're going to move on to the special event application.
Through the chair, all reviews have been received and they are attached to this application. The, as of this morning, there was a question as to whether or not the porta potty was going to be provided by licensed taller. It is, and so that worked out and we have the board of health sign off. Building Department has reported that they have no issues with this. Highway has reported that they're on board. There is a question about a second sign board, but you might have seen that the first sign board is already out there. It's facing, it's facing west. Yeah, it's facing west, right out on 62. It's a notice about the event on Sunday. Dave, I'm sure, is working on a second sign board, but we're not 100% sure we'll have that. Chief Galvin has reviewed and said everything looks good. He has offered to send out an automated call to people in that geographic vicinity, so we're going to put together a script for him so he can make that call to let people know that Woodward will be closed from 1 to 4. And the fire marshal has weighed in and to his concerns about the parking and traffic on Carter, parking is going to be allowed on the church side of Carter Street, but the other side is going to have cones lining the street, no parking signs, to assure that fire and emergency apparatus could get through. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
I'm so excited. Second!
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Did you want us, we'll just leave it up to you as first?
Well, yeah, I mean, so we have two. These are the certificates that will go to the small kids that have best decorated their pumpkin. Make sure that there's been no parent influence on, on them. We'll pick them, I'll meet with the parents, make sure that it's okay for them to come down week from tonight. They will sit here, they will assume our rules, we can present them with the certificates. I have frames for all the kids. Margaret can lead them through a little bit of business, town business, and then they can, they'll open the, or open the meeting, they can, if you want, close the meeting, and then we can open ours.
If they stick around that long?
Well, I'm only thinking like 10 minutes, five, 10 minutes. Just like, come in, sit down, get your sheet, talk to Margaret, pitchers, big thank, and then up and go. So it depends, you know, if we have, I mean, either or.
The orange one's more cheerful.
You don't like drack? I love drack!
Yeah, they might be little kids too.
Alright.
Right, these are little kids.
The orange looks better from a distance? Yeah? Alright, so we're going orange? Orange it is. I will text you the names and have them printed out and be ready to go. And then you guys will be down there probably around 3, oh, sorry, to help judge, so we can send the kids on their way.
Three, if not before?
Three, if not before, because the Patriots game is on and, well, I'm sure all the parents will need to get home in time. That wasn't bad, to our madness.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a letter and conditional agreement with the Hudson Board of Selectmen. Or Dewey? With revisions?
There is, there is a letter with revisions that I don't have in tonight's packet. So we have received something back from Hudson with revisions, but I'm going to ask that we put this on the board's next agenda for signature.
Okay.
Okay, planning board is still dealing with this too, so.
Okay. Alrighty. And we have an appointment, that's a joint appointment with the planning board, for Jason Roel, Rowell, to the Economic Development Committee, with the term to expire May 31st of 2020. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Seconded it is. Thank you for your time.
It's for the chair's signature.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We also have a reappointment of Patricia Jackson to the zoning board of appeals. Her term will expire November 30th of 2022.
Motion to approve.
Seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we have an appointment of Jackie Marshall to the Recreation Committee. Her term expires May 31st of 2022.
Motion to approve.
Seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye. So now they have a quorum.
I was just going to say.
Yes.
Alrighty. Thank you. We have the Massachusetts Cultural Council FY20 local fund contract.
Do you want to, through the chair?
Yeah.
Through the chair. This is a contract, a state contract for $4,800 to provide... It's to be deposited into the local account for the, for Berlin's cultural council for activities that are, for activities to be funded by the cultural council's approval.
And this is something that's done annually, I assume?
Yes.
So do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Margaret, is this something that happens every year?
The cultural council?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. They receive a grant to, to expend funds from the Code of Mass Regulations that govern the activities of the cultural council.
And we appoint people to the cultural council who approve the requests that come in.
Nice. The amount varies, I assume?
It's, I think they keep it within a range, but...
Okay. And we also have the offer letter for the building commissioner finalist, Richard Hanks.
Through the chair, the board met last week, an executive session to discuss the terms of the employment offer. I then brought information to the personnel committee in open session and presented all of the offer terms to the personnel committee, and they voted unanimously to support this. So Richard Hanks would begin in his full-time capacity on November 12th.
Great.
And the board did approve, the board did approve this at your last meeting.
Do we need to take a vote in public session too, or?
You don't have to take a vote in public session.
Okay.
We can ratify your vote.
Does this discuss?
Oh, okay.
Roger?
Yes?
Is that a permanent position or is that a contract position?
Permanent.
This?
Thank you.
We have, we now have a full-time building inspector. Yes. Building commissioner.
Oh, good.
No, it says inspector, huh?
Oh, I think it's, the job description is supposed to be commissioner.
Commissioner.
Yeah, but on the R here, it says building inspector.
Strike through, input commissioner.
Oh.
The job, yeah.
Well, I can...
Job description is for commissioner.
I think Mary's making a change on the line.
Oh, it's on page one, but I'll fix that.
So it just needs a new page one?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I just signed only in page two, and it says building commissioner, I believe, on the second page. Am I right?
Yeah, on the clothing. It talks about FY20 building inspector. Does that need to be flipped as well?
That's the FY20...
No, that's the budget.
That's the budget line.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, well, regardless, there you go.
Thank you.
Alright. Under new business, we have a modification of license policy.
I have to inform the board, I do not have that ready yet for your first reading.
Okay. So we'll defer that until perhaps the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And the licensing guidelines?
So this is, the agenda titles this licensing guidelines. What I've proposed is rules and regulations for Section 12 on-premise licenses. What I've proposed is rules and regulations for Section 12 on-premise licenses. This is for the board's first reading tonight. The section titled Sunday Sales would have to be customized for Berlin based on the licenses the board has already issued. So as far as closing times, operation on Sundays, whether statutes have been accepted or availed of by the town, that's going to need to be refined to reflect, to reflect Berlin's prior votes and procedures. Everything else, I think, would apply. And what this does is it provides a reasonable timeline for requests for modifications to come through so that public safety reviews can be done. And I would actually recommend, you're going to be taking this up at a future meeting, maybe on the 28th, but what my recommendation would be is that these rules and regulations go with all of the license renewals for every calendar year, all new and transfer licenses, so that this information can be shared on a regular basis with license holders.
Okay. So are you going to, are you going to redraft the Sunday sales or does it just need to match what we have?
Yeah, it's, it's going to have to be edited to match what Berlin has.
Okay.
So we're going to have to look at the licenses that are already issued and things like that.
So we can, the board can take this under advisement and it will be back next Monday?
Monday. I expect there'll be edits for your review and please give me comments by Wednesday, this Wednesday, if you have any comments on any section of this.
We're down to the board questions and comments.
I have nothing.
Ah!
What?
I know, it was a slack week. Sorry. I know. Don't worry, next week I'll come loaded, watch.
There'll be 20 next week.
There'll be 20 next week. We'll be here till 11:00.
Just to make up for it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, well, we've got to wait about 15 minutes to start the hearing at 8:00, so.
Can we go into executive session and then come back out?
We could, just to approve the executive session minutes?
Okay.
Okay, then we will...
Come back.
Do I hear a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter 38, chapter, or section 21A7, to vote to approve executive session meeting minutes of October 15th and to return to open session to continue our meeting?
Waitsaki, aye.
Keefe, aye.
Stone aye.
The selectmen are back in session, October 21st. It's 8:00. We have an all alcohol liquor license violation hearing. The Flat Penny Bar and Grill, also known as Berlin Commercial Realty LLC, 263 West Street, Berlin, Mass. We, yes, we do have a sign-in sheet. I think it's gone through the crowd. We have public comment guidelines posted up here in case anybody needs to take a look at that. This is, we're opening this hearing of the Board of Selectmen as the local licensing authority relative to alleged violations of the all alcohol Section 12 license held by Greg Smith of the Flat Penny Bar and Grill at 263, 263 West Street, Berlin. This hearing is being recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image may be recorded. Notice of this violation hearing was sent by certified mail return receipt to Gregory Smith on October 10th, 2019. I asked the clerk of the board to read the notice of violation hearing for the record.
On October 10th, 2019, via certified mail, a letter was attempted to be provided to Gregory S. Smith, manager of record, Berlin Commercial Realty LLC, doing business is Flat Penny Bar and Grill, 263 West Street, Berlin, Mass. 01503. The Berlin Police actually had to hand-deliver the letter on October 16th, 2019. This is a notice of violation hearing held Monday, October 21st, 2019, at 8:00 p.m., Selectmen's Room 206 at 23 Linden Street, Berlin, Mass. The letter reads as follows. Dear Mr. Smith, the Flat Penny Bar and Grill is licensed to sell alcohol under a license issued by the Berlin Board of Selectmen as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 4, Licensing Boards, among other statutes and as notice above. Christine Keefe, the chairman of the Berlin Board of Selectmen, has authorized me to send this letter to you on the board's behalf. It has been brought to the board's attention that there is signage before the Flat Penny Bar and Grill at 263 West Street, Berlin, Mass. that advertises words to the effect of "under new management and coming soon." Multiple references on Facebook, Berlin Neighbors Connect, where customers reference new ownership and management, and a woman self-identified as Joan Connor of Berlin, Mass. responds and states that she is among the new ownership group. The board has also received a written report from Berlin Police Department, Berlin Police Detective Kevin Trongon on October 10th, 2019, a copy of which is enclosed. On October 21st, 2019, at 8:00 p.m., the Berlin Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing pursuant to general law, Chapter 138, Section 23, to discuss your alcohol beverages license. You are advised that it is a violation of the Massachusetts law for an alcoholic beverages license to be used by anyone other than the person or business entity that is listed on the license. Any change in ownership, corporate officers, or onsite manager is not permitted unless both the Board of Selectmen and the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission and the sale of alcohol without such approval is a violation of Chapter 138. No license may be transferred by the license to another person or entity unless the application to transfer the license has first been approved by the board and the ABCC, and no such transfer applications have been filed with this office. The Selectmen's office was contacted on Wednesday, September 11th, 2019, by two gentlemen who purport to represent the would-be buyer of your restaurant. Nonetheless, we would like to talk to you personally as the manager of record under the present license. We urge you to attend this hearing and you may be represented by counsel at your own expense if you wish. These allegations, if proven, would constitute a violation of general law, Chapter 138, Section 2, sale of alcohol without a license, and could constitute grounds for disciplinary action, including a written warning, suspension, or revocation of your license. If you have any questions, please contact my office. Sincerely, Margaret Nadowitz, Town Administrator, courtesy copy to the Berlin Board of Selectmen, Berlin Police Chief, Thomas Galvin, and Town Counsel, Brian Riley Esquire, KP Law.
I'm the presiding officer for this hearing and we'll call witnesses one at a time to provide relevant testimony. I will call the following individuals in order to testify during the evidentiary portion of this hearing. It will be Police Chief Tom Galvin, Gregory Smith, Flat Penny License Holder. Other witnesses and other witnesses may be invited to provide relevant testimony or submit evidence for the board's consideration. I'll recognize members of the Board of Selectmen also, should they have any questions of the witnesses during their testimony. Any witnesses providing testimony must first swear to the truthfulness of their statements. And at this time, I ask that all witnesses intending to provide testimony at this hearing stand and raise their right hands for the oath.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, then we will call the first witness, which is Police Chief Tom Galvin.
Good evening.
Hello.
Make sure you speak loudly so the camera can pick up.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
First, I just wanted to clarify, in your reading of that letter and the notice of the hearing, you talked of it, the notice being hand-delivered. Unfortunately, we weren't, were unable to hand-deliver that to Greg Smith. It was hand-delivered to the Flat Penny Restaurant and to the manager who was on duty that day, which was William Kraus.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Greg has been unavailable to us at all. But we've come involved here is on October 3rd, we were investigating an incident at the Flat Penny. During that investigation, the officer's involved, Detective Trongon, was trying to figure out who was to contact for the business, who was in charge. You know, we had heard and, you know, being in town, it's not a big town, that Greg was involved, Greg Smith wasn't involved. We really weren't 100% sure. There was a lot of confusion with the staff that was there at the time. Ultimately, Detective Trongon was able to get in touch with Mr. Stephen Scott, who's actually here today, and he was able to provide him with information on who the new ownership group is going to be. He identified himself as an owner and operations manager, Joan Connor as an owner, who was also here tonight, Greg Sanborn as an owner, and that there would be a new manager, you know, day-to-day manager of William Kraus, who was set to start work on October 7th. That, that kind of led us to where we are right now. We've had no, no interactions with Mr. Smith and any attempts by our department to contact him have been unsuccessful.
Did you want to share with us the testimony that Kevin Trongon would have?
It was just that that summarized, what he did is he did a letter summarizing his involvement that day at the Flat Penny.
You all, I mean, they all...
And that's the letter that was included in the notice.
Okay.
And that ultimately identified the three owners.
Okay.
And the new proposed manager.
Okay. And seeing as Greg's not here, I don't know if our, just continue on with the next...
Yeah, I mean, he's, the notice was to give him an opportunity to be here. You know, if he's not, you know, the hearing can still, still proceed and I expect there's some other people who would like to address the board too.
Right. Okay. And you, you had taken an oath or you would prefer that?
We'll prefer to him and then we'll be happy to fill in any blanks.
Okay, can you state your name?
Yes, good evening. My name is James Mears. I'm an attorney with a legal practice located at 80 Foster Street in PBD, Massachusetts, and I have provided and I'm currently representing what has been described to you as the new ownership of the New Flat Penny LLC here in Berlin.
Want to sit down?
Certainly. So just to give you some background of where we have come from is, this is a group that negotiated a purchase and sale agreement with Mr. Smith and his LLC that was signed in, on July 23rd of this year, 2019. And understanding that as part of this transaction, there would be an all alcohol license involved, the parties negotiated a interim arrangement whereby the new entity would come in and start to assume the management operation of the business itself, which was done primarily for, for two reasons. One, it was to acquaint the, the proposed new ownership with the operation itself. And additionally, and very importantly to Mr. Smith, was to come in and get a grasp and really a grip and some control over expenses that were not being addressed by the, the underlying entity that was in control of the Berlin Commercial Realty LLC. So as part of the, the purchase process, the parties entered into a management agreement which provided for the details of what would be happening in the interim as we move towards doing our due diligence in checking the title of the company itself as well as the property as we were going to be purchasing both the, the land and the business and naturally the building that sits on it. So while that process was underway, we, again, under our management agreement, provided for certain terms. And one of those, and certainly if I would think of concern to the board, was that we would not be engaging in any activity that was in violation of either the ABCC or the local municipals' regulations regarding the use of a alcohol license. And so somewhat anticipated by us and inherent in the agreement itself was that Mr. Smith would inform the town of both the plan to sell the business and the land as well as naturally to assist in the transfer of the all alcohol license. So while the agreement was in place, we found out that a letter had been sent to Mr. Smith that wasn't directed to the new entity, but a letter indicating that the board wanted to speak to Mr. Smith and he was to contact, I believe, the secretary of the board. I spoke to Mr. Smith actually on September 20th because it was necessary for us to extend our, our management agreement because the initial agreement was only running for a 30-day period. I told him I was aware of this letter and that in executing this extended agreement, it was necessary for him to call the secretary of the board and check in with her and provide her with any information that, that she requested, answer any questions, and certainly, again, to, to reassert that while this, this purchase and sale was pending, we had this management agreement in effect and, again, expecting that he would notify the secretary for the board who the management would be under his authority and delegation as the holder of the liquor license. I only learned earlier this evening when I specifically posed that question to the secretary that unfortunately, Mr. Smith apparently did not contact her as he represented he was going to do on September 23rd. So, again, we proceeded along believing that things were in order with the town and did not realize further until we learned of this meeting this evening that, in fact, Mr. Smith has virtually had no contact with the town or the board or the police chief as, as indicated, which has unfortunately put us in a very difficult position because we are about to consummate the purchase of this property, actually tomorrow. So it's, it's not certainly come as good news to us that, in fact, there wasn't communication that provided the designation of a, of a manager there in, in Mr. Smith's place. I have, albeit not great copies, I do have copies of the extension, the modification and extension of the management agreement and I'm happy to provide the one for you if you would like it for your record, but I'll specifically note in it that it says as one of the provisions, "The seller agrees not to act or fail to act in any manner that would cause any violation of any applicable law, rule, or regulation pertaining to alcoholic beverage sales to occur during the term of this management agreement. In the event that seller should act or fail to act in such manner that results in the violation of any applicable law, rule, or regulation pertaining to alcoholic beverage sales, seller shall be responsible for any fines incurred as a result of such violation. And in the event of any such violation, buyer at its sole option and discretion may immediately terminate this management agreement." Naturally, at this point, once again, we are, are essentially standing here without Mr. Smith and our senses and naturally our concern that we end up bearing the responsibility for... for frankly, what should have been a fairly simple communication process with the board to let them know what was transpiring here. We've somewhat learned the hard way, most recently with an event in which we were seeking a one-day license for our place for an event last Saturday, which ultimately, we had to cancel, and we take full responsibility for that. I mean, we certainly need to be aware of what the local municipal rules and regulations are. Unfortunately, here, we relied on Mr. Smith to make sure that the town was not only informed, but was in approval of his designating our group as being on the spot to not only run the business pursuant to all local rules and regulations, but to have that designated manager for the license while we move through this process of completing the purchase and then completing our own request for transfer of the license. So again, I have two of the owners of the business with me here this evening. If you have further questions for them, we have come in hoping to pick up what we understood has been a troubled operation, and do something positive with it. It's our intent to continue with that, and we believe we've already seen some very good changes with the operation itself and the reception from the public. But naturally, we can't miss the basics, and certainly, that has unfortunately happened here. So it is our hope that whatever consideration the board can give us as we complete the sale of the business itself, that we would ask for your consideration there, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any...
I have one.
It's not specifically, it's just, I think we need to know steps to rectify what we need to happen, to make this...
Do you want to ask our attorney?
I have one quick question.
Okay.
It sounds like Mr. Smith has sort of been out of the picture for some weeks. Do you know what the story with him is?
So we don't fully understand it. Our sense is that, as I mentioned at the beginning of my remarks, that Mr. Smith has run into a number of financial issues. We have seen almost daily traffic of folks coming in, looking for him regarding vending contracts. We have recently been put on notice by the DEP that there is violation of the water filtration system that apparently was brought to their attention by McClure Engineering as a result of an unpaid bill, and then notifying the DEP that the operation was not in compliance. So we do have a feeling that we've essentially been running around, trying to put fingers in the dyke, so to speak, as this has been a daily occurrence with creditors and various folks coming in, looking for Mr. Smith. So it's our sense that essentially, he has just been pushed to the wall financially, and therefore, has decided that it's just not in his interest to appear. So again, we're trying to make, again, not meaning him any ill will, we're trying to make the best out of a bad situation and bring it to conclusion, so that we can move on and relieve him as much as we're able, some of the financial burden.
Do you anticipate that he'll cooperate as far as the change of manager and etcetera?
Yes, I do. I think that, you know, from what I've heard from him and the communications with him, I can't say I've gotten any indication that he's not supportive. I've got to confess, I am disappointed that he didn't make the call on September 23rd. I think it was very important, it was an opportunity at least. I told him I had seen the letter, and as I say, he represented that he would make the call, and I think we could have avoided a lot of what's broken down further since then, had he done that. But I do believe he will cooperate with us in the transition and transfer.
I would assume that financially, he would have to do that.
Yes, he does. He certainly, it's in his interest to do so, certainly.
I have a question for you. Obviously, there's been much time that you've put together in the management agreement and extensions of the management agreement and all of the paperwork, but mine is a simple question. Where's the responsibility and the accountability of the potential new owners, new owners to have followed up with the Board of Selectment on this, and not to just assume that Mr. Smith was going to take care of this?
Sure, and I think, you know, we acknowledge that we may have relied a bit too much on him in that regard. We were not relying on him regarding a lot of the surprises with the financial problems. We were addressing those. But I must say, and I certainly hold myself somewhat at fault here, I believed the man when he told me that he would make that very important phone call, and we did...
Did you follow up with him?
I did, and he told me he had called. So again, unless there is, as I say, I wanted to check, and I asked the Secretary directly, and she told me that she had not heard from him, which was frankly, not only disappointing, but surprising to me, because he had said that he would do so, and it clearly was of great importance to us. And if I had heard anything further from any of our folks, I would have been followed up, but I frankly, believed him when he told me he'd called, so...
So another question, so you truly are not the new managers of the Flat Penny, correct?
I think only in form. We did not, we do not have the blessing of this town in terms of compliance with your regulations. This should have been submitted by Mr. Smith and approved.
But if you're not the owners, how could you advertise under new management? It's misleading. It's not.
Well, except you had a management agreement.
We did, we did, and we thought that it was, again, it was carefully put together, it was also reviewed by Mr. Smith's counsel before it was signed, and we just believed that there was compliance with it.
And I mean, just having a copy of that agreement on file here in the office would have saved us all a lot of trouble.
Certainly, absolutely. And again, I think if there had been a conversation that the man said he was going to have, he would have been back saying, please forward this to the Secretary, or...
I mean, how easy is that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or, I've taken care of it.
Can we have Mary get a copy of this?
Yes, and I'm sorry, again, it's...
Maybe two, one, two.
Here, I've got a couple.
Two, one for Brian, two please.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for this witness, from anyone?
Well, I guess, not if the sale happens tomorrow. You know, obviously, and I talked to the Chair about this, you know, there's sort of two different kinds of disciplinary hearings, one where you've been serving minors, or there's brawls in the barroom, or something like that. Obviously, that's an immediate concern. You know, this is more sort of administrative changes that need to happen, but strictly speaking, you know, when the license has an approved owner and an approved manager, if someone else is running the business, that's not in compliance with the license. But I think the, you know, personally, what I think we're hoping to hear tonight is, you know, again, assuming everything happens the way it's supposed to tomorrow, you know, how soon can the board expect to get the appropriate applications in?
Yes, and so we were originally scheduled to close on Friday. We were missing a mortgage discharge with a private lender, which we had to have in hand, so the matter was continued over to today. Unfortunately, the attorney who represented the mortgagie had a death in his family, so he was not in on Friday. Back today, we are, again, hoping that this closing goes forward tomorrow. We expect it will, so... And the idea was, as soon as we had the closing done, we saw that as the appropriate time to come in and file the paperwork that was necessary to our application and get this moving.
Okay, yeah, because as you know, the board has to hold a hearing.
Certainly.
I'm not sure if these changes require a newspaper advertisement or not, they might not, but...
Mary would know.
The board has to hold a hearing.
Yes, it does.
Assuming they approve it, then it's got to go up to the state, and they do their thing. So, you know, it takes a little while, but I think as long as things are going in the right direction, I think that's really what the board wants to see.
Great.
I guess I'd like to say, can you notify if things go through tomorrow?
Yes.
And keep folks in the loop here?
Absolutely.
And maybe stop and talk with Mary about what needs to happen directly after, does that...
Yeah, I mean, basically, it's the, once the applications come in, then Mary or whoever can see that, then we get scheduled to hold a hearing, and, you know, do all those, cross all those teeth.
So can they continue to sell alcohol when they don't own the license?
Well, you know, I think that the way the ABCC looks at that as well, like the, I've seen this happen with a manager who all of a sudden walks out the door, or gets fired, you know, you need to have an approved manager on site, but obviously, that can't happen overnight. So I think as long, I think the ABCC as well would say, as long as you're taking steps to get some appropriate person in there as soon as you can, we don't want to throw the book at you. So, I mean, by the letter of the law, if Mr. Smith is not the owner anymore, you know, yeah, that's an issue, but, you know, hopefully, we can get the application in within a week or something, and, you know, try to get that squared away. So it's, I usually don't advocate for running out and, you know, holding an emergency hearing, and, you know, if there's a different manager on site. The onus is on the license holder to make sure that all those things are in order, but at the same time, you know, I mean, I think you try to act reasonably, but we certainly do expect that things are going to happen as quickly as possible.
So what is a reasonable timeframe? If you close tomorrow, when do you feel that you could have the appropriate paperwork in by?
I would think that no later than Wednesday, we would be in to file it. I just give us a little bit of a gap tomorrow, because I understand we have to go to Warwick to get the actual closing done, so people will be traveling tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions of this witness? Is it necessary for either one of you? Are you all set?
Did you have anything that you'd like to share, or...
No, I was covered, actually, afterwards, so...
Okay. Then we'll announce that the hearing is closed, correct?
Yeah, unless, I guess there's a couple of ways you could do it.
Oh, true.
If you wanted, are you meeting next Monday?
Yes, we are.
You could either continue the hearing and see if, you know, see if things get filed this week. If they do, you know, kind of along the lines of what I just said, you know, my recommendation would be to deal with the new applications, rather than, you know, keep a disciplinary action, you know, going. I think that we did want whoever was there running it to, you know, take this as kind of a shot across the valley, and listen, there's some problems here, and they need to get fixed.
Absolutely.
But if the paperwork is getting filed this week, then I think that's on the right course. Either that, or you could, you know, close, or you could decide what you want to do, either to continue.
Either to continue.
Close it tonight.
To continue it for one week, till October 28th, or we could decide to...
It just keeps breaking down.
...close the hearing and let you all know what needs to be done within a certain amount of time. These are some of the choices that the board needs to deliberate and decide on, correct?
Yeah.
So I would move that we continue the hearing until next Monday, pending information that we gain this week.
And to, I would encourage you to get paperwork in this week?
Yes.
And if that's okay with the board, do we need a motion on that, to that effect?
If you're going to continue the hearing, leave it open, continue it.
Okay. You made the motion to continue the hearing?
I did.
Till October 28th. I would say it has to, you've got to get your paperwork in for the licensing, and I, if that is the motion, then I would second it.
I just, are you specifying in there that, because, I mean, he could get hit by a bus tomorrow, and...
Just encouraging them.
And that would make the closing hard, so I think you need to leave it a little longer than that.
Yes, yes, okay.
Which was the motion that I made.
Yes, all right. So I seconded the motion. Is there anything else to be said?
I mean, I have grave concerns about this. You have an owner that no one can find, regardless if he was sent an email, or sent a letter. Police tried to find him, tried to drop off a letter last week, couldn't find him. You can't find him, so I just have concerns about that. You have, you know, potential new owners who just assumed somebody else was going to take care of everything, that they didn't step forward to check on it themselves, to make a few phone calls, to see where we are, to see that the information hadn't come in, and what they needed to do. So obviously, I want business, Berlin businesses to thrive. That's the goal. However, I do have concerns that there really wasn't a lot of care and thoughtfulness that went into this process, to follow through with it, to come to the board, to come to the police chief, to maybe go to our fire marshal, to make sure that everything was okay, so I'm, I'm... I want to give the benefit of the doubt, but I believe that the benefit of the doubt has been given one too many times in this case.
Brian, you had actually said that the onus of this was on the owner of license, right? So the onus of this was not actually on them to do this process, it was on the owner of record. Is that correct?
Well, that's right. I mean, yeah, ultimately, it's their owner of record. It sounds, I mean, from what we've heard, there was a lot of breakdown in communication. I mean, the owner and manager, in this case, is the one who should understand if there's some change being made in the business, he needs to keep the licensing authority, you know, informed up to date.
And is there actually anything they could have even done, not being the owners, not being the, they couldn't have actually done any of this paperwork, or change of manager, or any of that, because they are not the owner of the record?
That's true, but in terms of communication, I mean, you know, obviously, in hindsight, could have been better. In terms of filing the application to change the manager, or to, you know, change ownership from this company to the new company, you know, the license holder has to sign those things.
Has to do that, correct?
Yeah.
All right. Got a motion and a second, correct? Through the Chair, there needs to be a time certain stated for October 28th, so I recommend that you go with 7:30 PM for the continuation of the hearing on October 28th. Okay. All right. Did we vote? All right, then we're going to take a vote right now. Does it matter? Was there something else on our agenda? I don't really...
I think because it's a hearing, it should be a day, I think, I think because it's a hearing, it should be a time certain.
Yes.
I'm saying, could it be at 7:00, or is it 7:30?
7 o'clock, that would work for you? And we've got nothing else on, at 7?
Department head report, actually, 28th, no, possibly nothing.
Okay, all right. So we would, do I hear a motion to continue this hearing to, or do we need to take a vote on the other first?
The other...
She made the motion previously. She made the motion previously.
I'm going to amend, friendly amend my motion to add a time of 7 o'clock for the continuation.
Okay. All right, so a motion's been made, motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Better communication is the goal here. That's what I would say. It would have been nice to get a copy of that agreement.
Yes, absolutely.
Good luck tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. I think we've covered everything. I think we just need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.